So.
Okay.
Just for recording.
Okay.
As required by the Unplug Meetings Act nineteen seventy five, adequate notices meetings provided on January fourteenth, two thousand twenty one by publication of notice in express time and posting said notice in this bill on the same day. Mayor Barsley?
Here.
Mr. Baylor?
Here.
Mr. Beam?
Yeah.
Mr. Marqueta?
Here.
Ms. McDermott? Yeah. And Mr. Labor.
Here.
After so many months, let's do the flag salute.
The flag salute is just.
United States of America. In the public, we're advancing one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Welcome back, everyone. Missed everybody in person. What's it been? Sixteen, eighteen months or? Oh, why? Seven, twelve, seventeen, nineteen months. It's seventeen months, so wow. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on June seventeenth, twenty twenty one. Anyone want to make that motion? Anybody want a second?
A second.
Anybody have any questions, comments, deletions, commissions, permissions? Roll call.
Mayor Barsley?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Beam?
Yes.
Mr. Marqueta?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott? Yes.
I'm looking for a motion to accept the Treasury report in the July bill list. Anybody want to make a motion? I'll make the motion. Anybody want a second? Second? Anybody have any, any pulled? Any questions, comments on either one? Very none? Roll call.
Mayor Barsley?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Beam?
Yes.
Mr. Marqueta?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott? Yes.
Looking for a motion to accept the tax collectors' tax and sewer reports for June twenty twenty one. Anybody want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Anybody want a second? Anybody have any questions, comments on the reports? Roll call.
Mayor Barsley?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Beam?
Yes.
Mr. Marqueta?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott? Yes.
Okay, back live. Chief Hammer, do you have a standard routine ready for us or what?
My monthly report, I assume this one called up for him, sorry, it was. Trying to log in on the phone. Want to report, June was a little bit active. Usually happens in the summer months. With the one thousand one hundred fifty-one calls, our sums is one hundred and forty-two traffic sums is Detective Bureau clearing for additional cases, getting eight more, and it's just a all-around busy month. Are there any questions on the report? We have increased the truck enforcement, but as you know, it's just an endless problem. Our class-two officer last month, I believe, was his first month being off FTO and enforcing truck enforcement. I have used him a little bit. He's been on the schedule, working as a second officer, because we do have a lot of vacation and time being used when the officers is out, was out on disability, is, he is back now. Or excuse me, he was out sick, he's back now, and we just had another officer that just went out. Just had a baby, so. That is, that is it with those stats. Is there any questions or if any comments?
Do we have an increase in fines? I don't even want to.
We're gonna talk.
Yeah.
I know it's be recent. Hey, June was high. Did I miss anybody family member dying or anything, or anything that happened? I feel, I maybe shouldn't ask that publicly, but I just feel like I don't know that I knew that anyone passed away, so.
Um, in June, I believe, yes, it was one of our officers. Me and one of their immediate family members, yeah.
I don't think I even knew that. Did we send anything somewhere?
Um, no, I'll.
We'll talk later. Okay, okay. Actually, I just felt bad when I saw it, like, did I miss or did we miss something? Okay.
Uh, yeah, I guess then. Actually, which, which month was that for, June, you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
My June overtime, nothing. I think that was May, but looking at my June, the June overtime that I sent, I don't have any agreement on there. That was two thousand twenty. Are you looking to come to the right of that?
Yes. Oh, okay.
Last year.
Okay, twenty twenty, okay.
Yeah, but I mean, that's, yeah.
Okay, 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 good, because I thought that's an awful lot. I'm thinking, how did I not hear it? More than one person had to have family members die if it was that much of one.
Yeah.
That's all, okay.
Um. As for the overtime report, significant amount was, was for sick time and was for the one officer was on, out for injury, that I said it is back now, and then the that, I think we did have some people with getting sick and quarantining and all that, so.
Okay.
We are pretty good right now, though.
Okay. You have any questions, everyone?
No.
All I can say is I do see the guys out stopping the truck and sure to do the best they can, but it seems to have minimal to no effect.
Yeah.
Well, not your fault, obviously.
I stopped the road one today, but one of our officers asked if he noticed them, because he had, he had ten pulled over just earlier this week. I don't know, it was Tuesday or Saturday, ten in a row.
Yeah, yeah, I've seen him with two or three stopped in time, too, right? Okay, thanks. Joe, Max is not going to be here?
No, Joe's unable to attend. Obviously, his report's here, it's as detailed as he ever makes it. And the other things that he needed to discuss are all on the agenda for later.
Okay.
So we can accept this report when the time comes.
Okay. Lisa, you have anything you want to say, or just?
There's just two things that I believe we need to vote on the record tonight. I don't know if you want to hand it up now or later. I did try to mark them. It's the Dell hardware support contract. I emailed that out to, I don't know, a few of you. If we want to go with the one year or the two-year, if the cost is outlined on there, we can save a hundred and fifty dollars if we do the two-year. This did expire apparently at the beginning of the month, and we had a hardware problem yesterday, so thankfully, it wasn't, wasn't anything we couldn't fix, but we do need to do this tonight so that we're covered.
Okay.
And then the filing cabinets, it's just my question, if you guys are good with going with that additional purchase this year, I've been asking for ten a year, but they messed up and they duplicated our order, so we can basically get one free filing cabinet if we accept the second shipment, and then I won't bug you to order ten next year, so.
We have the money.
Shannon did confirm we're okay with the money, so if you guys are okay to vote on those two things, then. Yes, if there's any questions.
I wrote it for reminder, we're doing, I guess, taking the other new best, so we'll be later, like, something like that. Just make sure I don't forget. I haven't written my shit. Okay, anybody have any questions or comments for Lisa? Okay. ACO and report, do you have anything you want to say, Lily?
No, just what she supplied me with this here. She didn't report anything else but that.
Court report, anything to speak about? Nothing to really speak about. You know, it's coming through in a new version. It's a little bit more challenging to understand. I will be curious as to when we all sit down together to figure out the dollars and cents over the last two years.
Yeah.
It's a little challenging to figure out from here, but.
Well, if you want to make a meeting, the one night to go, you know, if you want to be. In the next, yeah.
We're going to leave really. I don't know that we need to at this point, I think. Let me find out what we need to do and discuss it.
Okay.
Yeah, because somewhere along the line is going to involve our CFOs.
Okay.
Particularly theirs.
Yeah. So I'm looking for a motion to accept the Police Department report for June twenty twenty one, the DPW for June twenty twenty one, Township Clerk's report for June, ACO report, and the county clerk's report for June twenty twenty one. Anyone make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Anybody want a second? Second? Any further comments, questions? Roll call.
Mayor Barsley?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Beam?
Yes.
Mr. Marqueta?
Yes.
Yes.
Committee reports, if you have any. You raise your hand.
Well, with the school board, I spoke to Vicki about the town applying for the Saferoot School Grant. I think we should do it. They're requesting, maybe, if you look at the southern part of the school, or southern part of the town, where we could link up maybe some sidewalks of the school. They also, they were requesting, I don't know if it's even possible, maybe linking up both schools eventually, even a grant. I know we don't, obviously, the whole property.
Yeah.
Part, but I think we should obviously apply for the grants, something that we could use.
You know, I, I knew years ago, years ago, remember, they wanted to link the two schools together, but it never really got put forward, but at this stage of the game now, there's almost no reason not to, to link them together. You know, the park's right there, both. I mean, we all know how everybody's loving walking paths and things like that, and we'd just be an extension of.
You'd have to get an easement put through.
Put through. I don't, with, with the property owners that are up there, I don't know that, that would be challenging. I mean, we'd obviously have to see, but I don't see why it would be.
We can connect that path to the existing path.
Yes.
Through our property.
Right, right.
Which would probably minimize the money we would need to extend our walk.
Exactly. Yeah, but no, yeah, so.
So besides that, Rec on soccer sign-up started, field hockey started, and they're going to be part of the community's grant. I know they're going to be going out in the next couple of weeks. Also painting the dugouts at Stucker.
Vicki, you have anything on the school board while you're here?
No. That's, that's it.
Okay, real quick on Rec, it's, and nobody's asking or anything, but it was suggested. And I'm not saying that it was a good idea. I mean, it certainly is on the outside, but during some of those hot days a couple of weeks ago, if you drove by the park between eleven in the morning and three, three-thirty in the afternoon, it was desolate, except for a few people out there. There were no children there. Somebody had asked me what would be involved in putting a dark mesh over the children's playground area just so that the plastic wasn't so hot. You know, we all know about the steel. Sliding boards are past and such, but apparently the, the plastic also gets very hot, and I, I, I've seen big meshes before. I don't know what they're over or anything else like that. I'm just throwing that out there if somebody wanted to, and I'm not saying the whole interior thing there, you know, just an area where you could bring the children and, you know, keep some sunlight off the plastic so that nobody's falling, because again, I, I have the ability. My job allows me to do a lot of driving around town, and on those hot sunny days, there was, there was zero people at the park.
Yeah.
Zero people at the park.
I have a couple catalogs I can look at.
Yeah, just, just see, I mean, again, it's not something that I, I wanted to say we should spend tens, thousands of dollars on, but, you know, maybe there's a shade material and such.
Good. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, a couple things. Met with Shannon and Chairman of Land Use Board, it's all there, we have an issue with our professionals being paid without escrow money in the accounts. So that's been happening, and the town is footing the bill until we get paid back. So we both agreed with Shannon that no professional should be paid without their being money in the account to cover it going forward. So just as an FYI, if our professionals need to be paid, then we need to get the money from the people that have the escrow.
Is this for the planner?
This is for any professional.
But I mean, it got, it got brought up because of the planner?
Bruce brought it up.
Okay, Bruce.
Yeah, Bruce brought it up, so we took care of that, so that, that new policy's in place, so it shouldn't be happening anymore. And then I saw in here that Mike put in a recommendation on the basketball court, so I don't know if that was later on in the agenda or not. Because I know the second bid, we didn't get any bids. So Lisa, I'm speaking to Lisa about this, Mike could confirm this. I think that we satisfied our requirement, two bids going out.
Yeah, I forget if it's statute two or three, maybe two.
Lisa, you looked into it, it was two?
I believe it's two with the caveat that it has to be basically exactly the same.
And nobody bid on it?
Right.
Yeah.
So what does that mean now? Can we then go out and solicit our own?
Yes. I mean, I get the statute's pretty specific about what you have to do, but, yeah, you don't have to bid it, you get freed from that if you try twice and you can't, and it was the exact same bid, right?
I mean, first thing I would do is go to the people that gave the estimates to begin with. Yeah, I got quotes in the beginning, so we'll go back to them and we'll see, and we'll bring them in, we can, we can vote on it, I guess, and see.
Yeah, actually, I'm a little surprised. I thought one contractor, I know he picked up a bid package and was going to bid on it. I don't know why he changed his mind, unless the.
I believe Mike's office distributed six, and we had two online inquiries where they downloaded it, so I think we had eight total.
I'll certainly reach out to him later. The base in the asphalt part wasn't a problem for this company, maybe just getting the poles. And stuff, I don't know what held it up. I didn't know that until today, so I, but I'll reach out to him.
So do I need to get authorization then, or how do we handle this? Can I go out? Can we authorize somebody go out, or?
Yeah, let me check the statute. Like I said, I know that you can now directly negotiate with the vendor, and then if the committee wants to authorize you up to not to exceed or something like that, you can do that.
We already have the original amount that we voted on.
Oh, okay.
So we could just send out to exceed the map that was already voted on.
It's also still a good idea to try to get these two quotes, you know, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's six people.
Oh, I don't mind if anybody wants to give quotes, I mean, I'm willing to hear anything, you know, he's busy, but he's got.
If your idea is to go to the people who didn't do the bid.
And he's the resident.
Send a form letter, send a form letter, all, everybody took the package. Can I just do that? You know what I'm saying?
Mike has it, I'll do that, but I was just thinking of going out to the person that gave you estimates.
Okay, yeah.
Like I said, we'll bring it, we'll bring it.
As long as it's legal.
As long as it's legal. So do you want, you want to get back to me, or you think it's all right if I reached out to the company?
I think if you just reach out, we, it's, we've, we're on record that we bid the thing twice, and we've got nothing, so.
And we already approved the dollar now, and we have not to exceed already.
Right, so you're not required to get competing quotes, but it always makes sense, you know, just to see if, and like you said, maybe with something like they can't. I don't know, with all its supply chain issues, maybe they can't get the backboards, I don't know, you know.
All right.
And you already talked more than one quote.
I already have more than one quote anyway, so I'll just go back out to those two and.
Do you want me to mail letters?
I don't have a problem mailing letters either, that's fine with me, if you want to mail letters, too.
You just send letters to the board, pick up the package, and just say.
So that was, that was only two things, but that was it.
Lily, you have anything?
I don't, no.
Paul, did you have any?
I have nothing, no.
Professional reports, Mike, do you have any you can talk about in public, or is everything for executive?
I think executive, yeah. I could probably talk about, well, we'll talk about the increased fines and executive.
Okay. Any other professionals on this? Alan's not here.
Would I burn up what happened with the Stock Society and land use, or we back? If they wanted us to fire.
Well.
I, I think that could be personal with that, we're better talking.
All right, then, if it's not proper for executive, we'll just come out.
Then we can, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Old business, township-owned properties, that's still an active old business?
Yeah, it is. The folks that, at the people that own the mall that there are emailing regularly about when it's going to be on the bid spec and stuff like that, and I told them at this stage of the game, we haven't started to prepare it yet, but there'll be, that many other people will be the first enough.
Oh, if, if we put that property up for bid, we're auctioning it?
Yeah, 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 yeah. I mean, they're showing some interest in it, but.
Yeah. Okay, community day.
Right now, we are in the process of just finding a committee. They are working out the five K, they, the Rec. Rec has a meeting next week, so that's where I'll be finalized. They should be reaching out. Did they reach out to you, Lisa?
The only person who's reached out is regarding what I put on the agenda there, possible road closure for the five K, so I've been communicating with Colleen and Rich and Joe about that.
Yes, they're working that out. I guess right now, just finding maybe a committee, and we should be good to go.
Richard, once you get the information, and what you're, you can get the information, Lisa, you do resolutions for us to pass the proposal?
Yeah, yeah, with the actual route.
If it's screen, which is, it's county roads, Mike, do we have to get a resolution through the county freeholders to that?
It's, it's very complicated. We're trying to get them to do something easier, because it'll.
It's for good calls, too, so they, that should be.
That being said, I know the squad in years past, we've been on the county road doing a collection, and they were super easy to work with. It was a letter to the freeholders. Seven days later, it was a yes, so.
We just, Lily, second, can we talk about that without Joe, or?
Yeah, no, no, we can talk about it. We sat down with Joe and I and Mike and his engineer sat down, and we talked about it. And, you know, in the grand scheme of things, what we have to do, but right now, it is certainly functioning. We're reaching out to the county to see if we can make a repair that would probably last for an extended period of time until we really have a better game plan as to whether or not the town will or won't have a municipal sewer of what goes on behind the DPW garage. I guess the wording repair here is a little tricky, and we were going to meet with the county health department and discuss that, and to see if they, knowing that there are several options on the board, that they would give us the extended period of time to, you know, make the repairs that need to be to keep it functioning for a while, but as of right now, it is functioning as well as it has always, so. There's no real concern that it's not going to work for a period of time down the road.
Reform title work.
Yeah, that's just, county is transferring their interest in the re-farm. We are already on the deed, so I just suggested that we get some title work done to make sure, it's highly unlikely the county has any liens or anything placed against it, but once they're off and they transfer it to us, then it becomes, you know, a lien on our title, so I don't know that we need full-blown title work, probably just a search, because we got title work when we bought it, so I talked to the title insurance company, they said for under, it would be under seven hundred and fifty dollars to do the upper court searches and everything, and make sure there aren't any liens. I would just, I think it's a good conservative thing to do, just, again, highly unlikely, but, you know, the off chance they do, we don't want to be responsible.
Right. Alan's meeting?
I, I spoke with them, and they are prepared to have a meeting, pros, cons, answer questions with us, pretty much the same thing that they did with Warren County a couple of months ago. It's going, it's scheduled for our next meeting in August at seven. The state is still not back to in-person meeting, so they're going to do it by way of Zoom here, and it'd be a great opportunity to have this. They're going to make a presentation and then have a question and answer period.
Now, you're gonna, did you let Bruce know?
No, I, well, I told Lisa earlier today, I, I guess the best thing for us to do is to call it a joint meeting and have the Land Use Board here. I told them that we'll do it right after the flag salute and get everybody in and out, and hopefully fifteen, thirty minutes, and it's all done and over.
Okay. That's just relation to township property.
All right, so we got some quotes. Did you guys receive the email?
Okay.
So Joe did go and get the quotes. I guess everyone saw that the, the quote for a six-foot chain-length fence was going to come out, it was two hundred and seventy-five feet in length, it was like two thousand three hundred dollars. The installation of it would be three thousand three hundred thirty, and then for the vinyl, it came out to four thousand four hundred and sixty with the installation cost two thousand four hundred and fifty.
The cyclone was the cheapest, too.
Yeah.
Besides being the cheapest, what I like about that, if we're going to do it, is weeds can grow on it, it makes it more look more natural than looking like there's a big fence, I don't know. I mean, it'll be going right on the fence line, you know, tree line, so could over, get overgrown and least, it's really not noticeable.
Um, the only concern I have with that is it rostered, if someone cuts it.
Yeah, if it finally, it could cut it.
I mean, technically, well, the vinyl would be far more fragile regardless, okay.
I mean, that's only my opinion, I'm just saying, I, I'm just saying that stuff can grow on it, and it would not be real noticeable.
Yeah, that's true.
But with the chain, like, they can climb over it, with the vinyl, they can't.
Yeah, only with the vine, the chain link and the.
Well, I think the only we're trying to avoid here is, I think the seed was planted that there's a crossbar there.
Yeah.
And all we're trying to do is deter people from walking through. If one or two kids once in a while decide to climb over it, I mean, they're climbing over a final fence if they really want to.
I bet you're right, and then toss it over.
Personally, I just think the vinyl looks nicer.
Well, it does if you have to see it, but my point is, if you put the cyclone and the weeds grow, you don't see the fence at all. All you see is natural habitat. That's, that's all I'm saying, that's just my opinion. If, if, if we cut that field down like grass all the time, vinyl probably would look nicer, but this, I think with the, with the cyclone, weeds is, there's the morning glories and all, and this gravel in between grow up, and you don't even see it. It's cheaper. That's a, I said it's a cheaper worry about, but that's all.
I mean, it's up to you guys. I was leaning towards vinyl, just because.
I was, too. Then I went out and looked at it, and I thought, you know what? If you put it right along the tree line and it's cyclone, and it gets overgrown, no one even sees it.
Can we get, I guess, what would we get, like ivy to grow?
I, I, I think there is just a slew of natural weed.
Weed, weed will take.
Regardless, right.
Then you know who climbs over. I don't, I don't, I'm just saying what I think. I mean, you make the motion for whatever you want to do.
What do you guys think?
I gave you my opinion.
I said I would like the vinyl only because my concerns would have been if anyone climbs over. But my husband and I put a chain-linked fence up, and with that, we taught some type of, Paul might know about it, some type of a rolled-out material.
That, that goes in, that screens it.
Locked it, everything.
Yeah.
And like trees and stuff can still grow through the fence line, but it kept that nice, or it kept the snow from coming through, it kept everything from coming, and it was definitely, it's a blocker, and we've had that about twenty years now, and it's never come down or anything. I'm just not sure we'd have to price that out, too, because if it's more expensive than getting the vinyl, to get the vinyl, if it's, but we want to.
Certainly not security, it's only here that people can't cross.
Yeah, well, it's really for the slide ability purposes. And with that being said, too, vinyl, acid rain, I, I mean, you all see the brown and black vinyls that are out there, five, seven, ten years later. You know, so they don't really keep that nice appearance for a forever look.
Oh, I didn't realize that.
I don't, I don't have any.
No, no, I, I know plenty of people that got vinyl and are pressure washing it every year.
Okay.
Yeah, right, 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 so.
So what, we vote tonight for the chain link? Is that something?
Also, they gotta make a bunch of them, I guess, before, yeah, I guess, yeah.
Something we can get.
I, I, well, we're all spoke for, I, I didn't work for a cyclone after I went out and looked at it.
And would that be since, since we're having discussions on, I gotta tell you, I genuinely don't think we need a fence out there. I think that tree line is as thick as it comes, and you're really not going to get traffic coming through there. And as a, as a worst-case situation, which would be so much more affordable, is to just plant multiflora rose, which in, in theory is just a large thorn bushes. You know, at twenty dollars a bush, you get thirty of them, and that would do it, but I'm really, I'm really, personally, I'm not on board with putting a fence there. I think the tree line is ample. I don't think it will create a problem. I think that we're, we're putting too much thought into a problem that isn't going to be a problem. That's my opinion.
All right, I'm still for the fact, so I'll, I'll make a motion for the chain-length fence to have Joe purchase the fence, and then I guess he's going to work at, work it out with Morse County C O L P to install it.
Chain link cyclone.
Yeah, the cyclone.
Cyclone.
Yeah.
Anybody want a second?
A second.
Anybody any further comments, questions? Roll call.
Mayor Barsley?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Beam?
No.
Mr. Marqueta?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott? Yes.
Okay. Basketball court update, we kind of did it already, right?
Yeah.
Good business. For a motion, I guess it would be all three of these, resolution number. For a motion, I guess it would be all three of these, resolution number forty twenty-one. Uh, for the municipal alliance, resolution forty-nine twenty-one for redemption of the res, what's that, tax resolution? And then fifth, resolution fifty twenty-one, state body worn camera grant, uh. Maybe I wanna make, I'll make the motion that we adopt the resolution, maybe on a second.
Second.
Anybody have any questions, comments, discussion on them? Roll call.
Mayor Burson?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Marqueta?
Yes.
And Miss McDermott?
Yes.
Bob, do you wanna do fifty-one and fifty-two now? Fifty-two was added just tonight, and that is a resolution to extend the tax grace period through.
That's just extend the uh.
Extend the grace period.
Through the whole third quarter?
Correct, uh, to July, it's actually gonna be August uh twenty-third now, we did get a final date.
Okay.
And the last one that I gave you guys just tonight, um, I'm sorry to throw it in the last minute, but I wanted to get it on here, it is. The resolution for the American Rescue Act plan, so that we can, it's the chapter one fifty-nine, so we can get that back into the current budget. So that we can utilize that funding sooner.
So that a resolution is for transfer basically?
Yeah, you have to do the one fifty-nine to get it into the budget.
Okay, that's fifty-two twenty-one, right?
Correct.
Okay, so looking for a motion to adopt resolution fifty-one twenty-one is extension of the third quarter property tax grace period. To, what was the date you just said?
August twenty-third.
Their twenty-third, and resolution fifty-two twenty-one, which is allow the transfer of the money from the American Rescue. Uh, act fund. Into our current fund, so, I'll make the motion, we adopt it, maybe one second.
Second.
Anybody have any questions, comments on those two? Roll call.
Mayor Burson?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
And I'm back on ACV, state body, what? Yeah, gee gee, did we end up getting? Wait, weren't we only expecting just to get to pay for the cameras, and this is paying for a whole lot more than that now?
Um, it's a little bit more, like only six hundred dollars more.
Oh, all right, I.
But I, I I have uh applied for a federal grant to get additional funding for that, so I'm hoping. In the end, that we don't have to put any money out, um, which uh. That grants do this month, so, take a little while to you uh to work for the federal grant, but we'll see.
Okay, all right, cool.
Looking for a motion to introduce the Urines number one oh six twenty twenty-one as capital worth to purchase some DPW tractor and power rate. Can anybody make that motion?
I made that motion.
Our second, questions, comments, or Paul, you wanna at least?
Explain it again?
Well, but basically what it is, is uh we're purchasing a a tractor to. It to increase our ability to mow more uh more productively, um, it's gonna be a larger tractor, uh, it's gonna help us eliminate. Hiring outside contractors, uh, so that we can do all of our mowing in-house, uh, without having to bid any out. The uh power rate is just something that the, we've been borrowing low pack ons on occasion and stuff like that. It just makes managing the ball fields and the athletic field so much easier, uh, it does, it has lots of special purposes. Um, and so that's what that's all about.
Anybody have any questions, comments on it? Roll call.
Uh, Mayor Burson?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Marqueta?
Yes.
And Miss McDermott?
Yes.
And just for the record, this is just allowing us to go ahead and place this order, you guys already approved these amounts and it's all.
Are we just authorizing to turn over the twenty-two thousand ransom frontline law order to the county for auction, is that all that is?
Yeah, that's all.
So we just need a motion for that, I believe, right?
Correct, yeah.
So, do you wanna make the motion? Second, anybody wanna?
I'll second it.
Any comments, questions on it? That's just old equipment that we give to the county day auction for us to get money back, that's, roll call.
Mayor Burson?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Marqueta?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, looking for a motion to renew the Dell support contract for the uh. IT system here at the municipal building, what were the numbers again on that, or, we we really have no choice but to get.
Yeah, it's one thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty cents for two years.
Okay, we have the money for it, right?
Correct.
I'll make the motion, I'll second, anybody have any further questions, comments on it, roll call?
Mayor Burson?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Marqueta?
Yes. File cabinets, uh.
Uh, not to exceed three thousand for ten.
And that's for two years, right?
Yeah, we already got set ten this year, it's our second ten, yes.
Yeah, yeah, but it's all gonna come out of this year's budget, we're gonna buy ten this year, ten next year, but we got them all.
Yeah.
Everybody, well, yeah, we can talk like that, huh? And we get two two extra or whatever.
Basically, we're getting one for free, so it's a good deal.
Okay.
Always working those deals, friend.
I'll make a motion, we buy the uh buy all we have, it's anyway, anybody, have you heard the prices or comments on it? Roll call.
Mayor Burson?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Marqueta?
Yes.
Mister McDermott?
Yes.
Do we wanna authorize the leaf farm title work not to exceed seven hundred?
What was that one?
Leaf farm, uh, title work not to exceed seven hundred.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we uh authorize the title search for the leaf farm not to exceed seven hundred dollars, anybody want a second?
Second.
Questions, comments, roll call?
Mayor Burson?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
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 And and a side note here about storage, um, I know Joe and everybody who's working and it's all cleaned up out here and everything, that room filled up for darn quick. Y'all should stick your head in there, just to see how much room is not there now. Uh, I mean, we did discuss a couple of things, uh, um, one of the largest space gathering is. Land use board, uh, maps and files and. Blueprints and things of that nature, at some point, somebody's gotta go through it to see if there's duplicates that we don't need. Uh, I mean, I I noticed that we have to keep something, but there could be copies and copies. I mean, you see how many copies showed up in here, you know, we don't know if there's such duplicates out there. Um, I, that'll be an enormous undertaking at some point, but uh, wow, it's got a lot of room.
But the storage unit's empty, so.
Yeah, the storage unit's empty, it'll be leaving, uh, everything is in there, and again, we can put more in there. Um, but it's full.
Yeah.
Filled up in a hurry.
Well, I, plus, you know, I'm glad we're saving the money from the rental.
Right.
And at least we're paying the legion.
Legion, exactly.
Okay. Correspondence? I wonder if we agree with the historical society, anybody wanna talk about that?
I'm confused, did we ever approve a bench?
This is a letter. This is suggesting a land purchase or rental agreement for parking at the municipal park, anybody know what that's about? I have no idea.
They were, I think they're just suggesting that it's hard for parking at the municipal building, uh, the municipal park now that we don't own the school, so they're making a suggestion.
Okay, it's a suggestion, okay.
It is a suggestion, right?
Okay.
And 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 I I think one of the biggest obstacles, because it's been suggested and looked at before, is. The field that we've traditionally borrowed on Community Day in the past, uh, is actually in farmland preservation. So, being able to purchase it is probably, it's gonna have some challenges, even if we were to look at that. Uh, and things of that nature, but.
I got on the side tracker, I'm sorry, I missed the point, the, well, point of discussion.
The point of discussion is the historical society would like to see us try to purchase some space for parking. Uh, behind the old school, the field that we've traditionally borrowed, uh, to do our Community Day. You know, we've had parking cars there.
The one at Doris used to own that, right?
Yeah.
She still let us use it.
Using, the Santinis have let us use it.
Okay.
Um, they're thinking that it would be nice to own half of it and. Create a little parking area, because seniors are having a hard time parking here and getting to the gazebo and this and that and. And, you know, it, there's no doubt that that's a legitimate.
Yeah.
Argument, but uh. I don't know that purchasing that piece is all that simple or. It is, that's the problem, I think, that's the biggest obstacle.
And you'd have to subdivide it, right?
It would have to be, yeah, no, there's, there's lots of thing, I mean, again, this is a great idea by these guys, but but.
I would look into it, but I don't know.
I mean, it, yeah, I mean, it's a phone call or two, but I I think it's, it's a pretty big fence to pawn.
Yeah, if it's preserve farm, they're not gonna let them subdivide it.
Right.
You know.
You know.
Unless it's for an ag purpose, like if you were, if it was a hundred acres, you're gonna make it a two fifty acre farm. Then you'd have to take it out of preservation, you can use it for parking.
Right, yeah, and that's like the state house. I mean, the reality of it is, is way back when, somebody should have had the foresight to not include that. Because we had an opportunity to to get it, and we let it go, so.
Okay.
Hindsight's twenty twenty.
Under correspondence, the only thing I got, I wanna make sure, Joe wasn't here, I was gonna ask him, uh, I got a letter from Warren County Public Safety. Regarding the temporary debris man.
Oh, yeah, no, we've uh discussed it thoroughly, we're good.
We're good with that?
We are good with that, um, we we're setting up a temporary space, uh, that'll be permitted in case. God forbid, there's a super storm sandy.
Yeah.
Um, unfortunately, at this particular time, that space will be up at Sucker Park.
Okay.
Where we'll be using it for wood chips, debris, or whatever needs to be done, um, we just have to file a permit for that, it's something that's been done. Eventually, our goal is hoping that on the municipal lot up here, we'll be able to eventually create a green recycling situation, which will create.
Yeah.
Have a permanent permit kind of thing, but it's, that's all taken.
Okay.
The wording on that was a little challenging.
Well, I just wanted, because we could lose special funding for emergencies if that will happen, that's why I wanted.
No, everything's good.
Okay. Anybody else have anything else? Okay, uh, make a motion, we open public comment, anybody wanna? Uh, second, all favor? You know, since you're back in person, I just wanna remind everybody that we do a lot of people, this is three minutes, I'm really doing it more for up here than out there. And uh, it's not a time for dialogue, to ask questions and ask questions back, people make up, get up, they make their public comment, they can ask a question during their public comment. After we close public comment, I don't care if we respond to it. But when we were in Zoom, we were actually getting into conversations and discussions with people at the podium, and that's totally, I think, inappropriate. I think it creates problems for us in the future, because if you talk too much to one person, don't answer another, so let's just be mindful that. When people come up, they could talk, they can make their comments, they can ask questions during their comment, after we close public comment. You can address the questions they answered, but we're not gonna allow people from the audience to yell follow up questions, it's not a press conference in that place, so. Okay, with that, anyone wanna make any comments?
Hello, Gary Hill, five point nine North Main Street, Storisville, um, two things, actually, one of them, sorry, that was one, but since you guys brought up. I didn't know you were gonna talk about the parking issue with the municipal park, uh, I just recently rented the park. And I gave a rather nice donation to the church to utilize their parking lot. Uh, because I had a lot of people coming out of town that were elderly, and I knew they're, and even, they even had a challenge making it from the church parking lot to the pavilion. Since we obviously, you know, that field is a no-go. We really don't have anything on this side of the creek, of the municipal park, correct? Could that be explored as a parking option? Just, you know, again, not something you have to answer right now, it's just, you know, something else to throw out there, because I don't know if there is anything, you know, on that side that, maybe that could be explored. Um, the other thing was with regards to. Uh, the fence on the municipal property, that's at the corner of Yvonne and Greenwood Street, right?
Correct.
Low, is it gonna be, was that area gonna be fenced in, or just a single line fence along?
After you make your comments.
Okay, um, my concern about that was the the shopping district debris. All the the bags and all the other stuff that's blowing around, that's always lined along Greenwood Street and in the fields, is it gonna get caught in those fences? Who's gonna, you know, now our guys are gonna have to maintain that. And, uh, you know, since that development's been there, I've never known it to be a problem, so I wasn't really sure why we were doing, you know, defense and. Art might be ignorant, or might, because I haven't been able to attend some of the Zoom meetings, so I just, I'm not educated enough, so if you're able to elaborate just a little bit on that as to why offensive areas need. But again, my biggest thing was that it's gonna look ugly, because there's gonna be bags and stuff blowing up against it all the time, and it's just gonna attract stuff. Other than that, glad to see you guys are back in session, glad to see you. Thank you.
Thanks, anyone else? So you know, I'll make a motion, we close public comment?
Second.
All favor? Anyone make any comments on the public comment? Yeah, regarding the parking. That actually looks, I think there is a possibility to get more parking here, up by the, um. You know what the easement is, where we come in on the side here, to get to the back, um, up on the hill?
Yep.
I think you could put some parking in there, if you really wanted to, um, I actually talked to Mike about it. I think that's an option, now you'd have to look at, you know, entrance and exits to it and how you work the traffic, but. It there may be an option, I don't know, but it is something that we look.
Dedicated handicap park.
I thought, yeah.
I thought when you did that, you actually had a number of spaces that you had, you don't remember.
Me kind of, me and like, yeah, Mike, we probably, we get it from Mike, but I know that there were issues that would have to be looked at with it. There's always something, you know, anyway, there was something that we looked at, and um, not that was it, for me. Anybody else?
I guess with the the fence, the garbage wouldn't be an issue on that side where we're putting the fence, because there's the berm. The the trash usually piles up on the other side of the berm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? With that, our motion goes to executive session, discuss personnel and contracts and potential litigation. And. There may be actually kicking afterwards, so. I'll make the motion going to executive, maybe one second. All favor? I, I don't know how long we're gonna be, no. I hope no more than thirty, at least five minutes. There's only one lawyer here and I.